Citizen Concerns, David, is there anyone?
There are a couple with their hands up.
Sure.
Colin, use your, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Chair from West Acton. I have a question and a concern.
Okay.
Please.
Um, the question is about the Thursday executive session. And I looked at the whether the properties, and it looks like there are four because they have to be listed. Oh, like street address, but it's, I think it's like nineteen two thirty-five. But if you look on the GIS system, nineteen to thirty-five, that's four properties. And I'm sure I would like to know which property specifically will be discussed on Thursday. That's my question. Then I have a concern after that.
Uh, John?
I believe it's nineteen and thirty-five, but I, that's a good question. I'll just clarify that with how it's listed, but it's nine, it's my understanding it's nineteen and thirty-five.
Thank you. That's what I thought. I'm in favor of buying all of them, even if, you know, just it's useful for utilizing to be great. Uh, to me, that the cash paid pays for itself in the long run, and we need that to preserve those houses. But uh, my concern was, um, I was forwarded a copy of a slide from the DEI, the Diversity in Equity and Inclusion Treaty. And I was very disappointed and concerned that it looked like there was a political agenda being, um, that the DEI treaty was being used to promote a political agenda regarding housing and development. And I thought that was unfortunate, and I'm very concerned about that. I feel like DEI should be about DEI, not about mixing up new building versus, you know, it is. So if it was with the HPP talking about what we agreed, or at least the state approved, and the board select would agree would be a focus, uh, but below fifty thousand, uh, see that would be inclusive. But if it's just about promoting, you know, like rezoning, uh, in general for market rate, that to me is not inclusionary at all. Also, just as a note, um, a couple of black leaders have, people of color, leaders with color, uh, have told me that they don't appreciate, um, diversity and inclusion conversations, um, being linked to anything suggesting that, um, black people, uh, you know, connecting black people with poor people. And so I, I appreciate just, um, the recognition of this concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Uh, next, uh, participant? Yep, uh, Undeviar, please go ahead.
Yes, uh, could you give us an update on the open event of the Zoom bomber? And at that point during the meeting?
Yeah, John will be giving an update during his manager's update.
Great.
Nobody else, John?
Okay, so, uh, we could move to the chair's update. Mine is brief. Um, we will be having a, um, an executive session, a standalone executive session on, uh, on Thursday, March fourth at noon. And our meeting, if you, I think we've all gotten notice, our, our meeting on the nineteenth. That's the third Monday in April, April nineteenth. That's the Patriots Day holiday, so that moving would be postponed, uh, until the following Monday, the twenty-sixth. So with that, um, John, for your manager's update, please.
Thank you. Um, so tonight I'm, I'm looking forward to presenting the town manager's recommended budget. And just to reinforce the amount of support and assistance I get from all the staff, I just want to make sure I took an extra opportunity to thank everybody for helping prepare for tonight. A lot of work went into it. Uh, we, turns out we had an extra few months because of the way town meeting, town meeting worked out. Uh, but we've certainly been busy doing a lot of other things, so I appreciate everyone's assistance. And I look forward to discussing it with you in a few moments. A couple of things happening next week. Uh, we're issuing three RFPs for disposition of real property. One is Piper Lane, uh, for Piper Lane, which is the house. We're gonna put an RFP out there to see if any is interested in relocating it to their property or to somewhere. Uh, twenty-six Carla, we're gonna put an RFP out to see if anybody's interested in acquiring that uh, for some use, a private use. And the third one is Three School Street, which we discussed last week. Uh, we're gonna try and put that on again and see if more interest comes in this time. Uh, the, we've been working very closely with the Water District and its development team on its solar project. And, uh, we've pretty much wrapped up the process of putting together a pilot, which I'm very pleased to report. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Selectman Snyder Grant for, uh, supporting those efforts and helping as the Water District. Uh, we, uh, came to an agreement, I think makes sense for this project, and also makes sense for projects that may come along later. Uh, so we're excited that, that they're supposed to be getting started before June or in June. As early as June, they could be breaking ground or putting things on ground. I don't know if they're actually digging, uh, for solar. Um, so that's exciting. And then the third item is, uh, at the last meeting during open comments, and just a few moments ago during open comments, people asked for an update on the police investigation uh, related to the Zoom incidents at the school community meetings that happened last year. The update is this, uh, there is no update to the investigation. And because of a juvenile being involved, there is very little that can and will be released. I can understand that that may not satisfy everybody's, uh, what, what they're looking for, but that's the update. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Uh, David?
I just wanted to ask, um, um, the manager if, uh, uh, they've thought about reopening the, the walk-up windows at Town Hall now that the, um, uh, COVID numbers appear to be getting a little bit better.
We will, I look forward to talking with you about that during COVID part, portion of the program, but the answer to that is yes.
Uh, any other questions for John? So then if you could go into members' minutes, uh, Jim?
Um, I don't have anything this week.
Okay. Uh, Joe?
Well, one of our goals was the West Acton Citizens Library, and I think John will mention this, but both boards have indicated that West Acton will have access to Minuteman Library under the wing of the Acton Memorial Library.
Good. Um, um, David?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that a, a couple of weeks ago, the superintendent announced that they've, um, uh, hired a principal for the high school, um, uh, woman named, uh, Joni Dean. Um, and so she starts at the beginning of the fiscal year on July first.
Thank you. Uh, Dean?
Uh, nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, do you want to, are you going to, are you going to?
John, when you lead away, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so first item under new business, special business, uh, the COVID nineteen response updates. John, please.
Uh, yes, thank you. So as mentioned earlier, uh, the pandemic cases have been, uh, the COVID nineteen cases in the community have started to see a decline, which is great, great to see. More and more people are being vaccinated. And, uh, last week, the governor announced some changes to how things are gonna go in terms of the state reopening. I think as of today, certain capacity limits were increased, uh, in restaurants and in other venues. And we have full details about that information on our website, uh, and the mass.gov puts out information daily on that. Uh, we've also been continuing to work on vaccinations. Uh, we've now done two, we've completed two clinics. And so as a result, we're now getting the second doses for those clinics. So, uh, we just are about to receive a hundred doses for the second shots for the February fourth clinic that we did in partnership with the Housing Authority, and we'll be getting, uh, more for that purpose as well. Uh, we're working with many other communities, uh, in our region to try to form a collaborative, to try to access more vaccines. Uh, we submitted a, uh, request to the secretary and to the governor's office last week. And, uh, we will let you know if, uh, if we hear back and if we're able to move forward on that. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to work on targeting, uh, populations in town that don't have access to vaccine. Otherwise, uh, we're gonna partner with, uh, Acton Housing Authority to do another clinic there uh, because the state recently announced that all residents at those facilities and staff at those facilities, um, are eligible. So that's a niche that we can fill, uh, while we continue to advocate for getting more for more of us. Uh, so that's good news. Uh, in terms of reopening, you know, the, the state announced that they want schools to reopen in, in a much more significant way in April. And, you know, as an organization, we've been starting talking about the same thing. You know, we would take it in a phased approach, and a lot of things that we'll do are what we had, uh, implemented over the summer here when, when the numbers were low again. So things such as browsing in the library, uh, we're gonna look to start that probably around the end of March, uh, once we get that sorted out. Uh, we're gonna do the takeout windows again in behind, uh, for the land use and finance. That probably won't be till mid to late March. Uh, we want to get a couple more, uh, weeks behind us. And also, um, hopefully it'll get a little bit warmer, uh, for the windows to be open like that and the staff to sit there. But we continue to, uh, service people that come to the building and meet them in the parking lot, uh, every day. Um, so it's worked out pretty well. Other items, uh, in terms of Thirty Sudbury and our human services, uh, operations over there, the senior center, I think we're really looking at a much more gradual approach. Um, the social services writers over there will probably start doing appointments only, you know, in March and April. Uh, veterans, Laura Ducharme, um, Heather, uh, nursing services will, will maybe do some more appointments on a case-by-case basis, depending on what it is. And then we're gonna just gradually, uh, look at, uh, what the data says and what we feel comfortable with. But as of right now, you know, I, I think we would be added on the board meeting, uh, before you, before anything substantial changes, uh, or that we're proposing a change in substantial. Uh, just to give you a quick update on the actual case numbers, uh, which I try to do at all these meetings. Uh, we have, uh, we're in the twenties, um, twenty-two, which is good news, current cases.
And how many cases total since last March?
Seven hundred and sixty-nine.
And, and, and you said that, um, we'll be getting second doses for the two clinics. And then was there an additional round of doses that we'd be getting for certain, uh?
Not, not for certain, uh, it's, that hasn't been, um, finalized. We've, we've asked for it and we're collaborating with Housing Authority, but we've, we've learned not to announce anything until we have it, you know, in the fridge, so to speak, because there's so many variables that we don't want, we don't want to, um, create expectations that aren't, can't be. So that's the COVID update generally, uh, and, you know, any questions or comments?
Questions or comments from, from board members? Okay. Is there anything from the public on John's COVID update?
No hands raised, Jim.
Okay.
I have one short thing.
Sure, Jim.
Um, we had a request from Franny Osmond that every so often when we just let people know how many people are here at the meeting, to recreate some of that sense of when we were all up in room two oh four. So I'm happy to say that there are twenty-five attendees at this meeting.
Okay. So, um, the, the next item would be the board to vote on the award bond bid for fourteen million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Uh, John, please.
Uh, this is, so on Friday, we announced that SMP reaffirmed our AAA bond rating, which as you know, helps us to secure very low interest rates when we go out to the market to issue debt. And, uh, this morning, we issued a very large, uh, borrowing. And we, as a result, I think the rates that we received were excellent. Uh, the work that we have to do, the board has to do is to consider voting to, um, formalize the paperwork, and Steve Barrett is here to give you all the particulars. But again, this is really good news. Uh, we were budgeting, uh, a certain amount for, for the debt service, for the fire station, and for some of the other projects. And this interest rate, uh, is really gonna help us because it came in below what we had been, uh, projecting. So Steve Barrett, I believe that you are in here somewhere. There you are. Hi, Steve.
It's muted.
Oh.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sure. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Manager, uh, Mr. Chairman, board members. Uh, it's really good to see you. Uh, as John said, uh, we floated, uh, a big bond issue. And just to back you up a little bit, um, this is the bond issue that we had in line for last March. Uh, the pandemic hit. The, uh, US bond markets were highly volatile and subject to change. We were advised by our financial advisor to secure a short-term bond for a period of time and then try again. And, uh, I'm happy to report that, interesting enough, the, uh, the rates we received on this bond were lower than I think we would have gotten last March. Um, you know, at the end of the day, it's, um, almost a fifteen million dollar bond issue. It was broken up into a couple of pieces. Uh, you know, the main reason why we did that was, one of the borrowings was for nineteen dash twenty-one Maple Street. Um, you know, municipal debt has to be used for municipal purposes, not for kind of private gain for the municipalities. Um, but there is a section of the law where we can issue tax-exempt debt under kind of private activity rules. And the way we looked at it is that nineteen to twenty-one Maple Street site, um, you know, it's a very attractive, very interesting site. And, you know, in terms of the town's uses there, um, our ability to use the area or lease it as a coffee shop or some private activity, you know, we wanted to kind of give the town a little bit extra room, uh, in terms of purposes. So we kind of split the bond issue out. It, it gets a little bit into the weeds. But, um, you know, the primary, uh, purpose was for the North Acton Fire Station. That was, you know, probably seventy-five, eighty percent of the entire bond. There was also some fire equipment, some sidewalks, some street improvements. So, um, as John said, we, uh, we went at it again. We went through the whole process, the rating process, uh, the AAA was reaffirmed. Um, so we floated the debt and, and so actually sold the debt this morning. And I'm, uh, extremely happy to report that, you know, on the Series A, which is, uh, the majority of the bond, the, the total kind of net interest cost was one point eight seven. You know, there's different pieces in there, but, you know, it, it kind of works like the financial advisor wants you to budget for four to five percent. But, you know, at the end of the day, we knew we could do better. And as John said, this is really good news for us. Um, you know, the, the issue is, and I think, I'm not sure some of the board members, there's a lot of signatures that are needed. Um, one vote tonight that's needed in public session. Uh, after tonight, on Wednesday, the plan is for the Bond Council folks to actually, and deliver, um, a bunch of other documents that myself and at least a majority of the board will be required to sign. But those aren't in, you know, public session. So what I need tonight is a vote. And the vote is, uh, almost as long as maybe as much as you're gonna see tonight. So with that, I'll, I'll get out of the way, and if there's any questions, I'll take them. But this is a really good rate for our debt. Um, the bond markets can get a little quirky, and, you know, we're real happy to place this debt. It's a real win for the town, and, um, that's about all I have. And if there's any questions, um, I'd be more than happy to take it.
Yes, Steve, hold on. Are there any questions for Steve? Uh, Jim?
Um, I know I should understand this, so let's pretend that I do, and I'm just asking this so that other people can find out. Um, so I, I know that we have a debt override that we've passed, uh, both at a town meeting and at the ballot box that allows us to, you know, uh, raise our levy beyond, um, you know, beyond the normal limits of the two and a half percent. And now we've got a situation in which we're, we're borrowing at more favorable rates than we were, than we budgeted. And what I, what I'm not understanding is, does that, how does that impact, um, either our, 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 our future budgets or our future, uh, thinking about, uh, our, our tax levy? Um, what, can you help me understand this, Steve?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, Jim. That's a great question. So, you know, for the, for the board, the board and some of the people in the audience, you know, excluded debt is a one-time addition to the levy over a period of time for certain debt. So to your question, Jim, I think the ALG plan was carrying a three percent, you know, average rate for the North Acton Fire Station debt. And in the ALG plan, it's shown as its own revenue source and its own expenditure source. And, and with excluded debt, um, if the number comes down, basically what happens is the increase in the tax bill or the expected increase in the tax bill comes down. So there's not really an impact on the budget, but there is gonna be a pretty good impact on the ALG plan. And it's gonna pull down the, um, the estimated increase. Uh, things have been kind of happening late in the day today. I don't have the exact decrease for the ALG plan. Um, John Mandri, and I will be working through that tomorrow and getting ready for ALG Thursday. But in essence, uh, this will take the ALG plan, excluded the debt numbers for the fire station, and substantially decrease them, which will decrease the impact on the tax bill.
Great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? So, um, uh, Steve, we were anticipating that debt on the fire station would be about three percent. Is that correct?
It is, sir.
And it came out, the, you said the, the net of it is one point eight seven percent. So when you said there were, there were three different, uh, pieces to this, are they all at one point eight seven percent?
Well, that, at, at this point, yeah, at this point, you, you've stepped into the weeds a little bit.
Okay.
You know, there's some, there's some, uh, shorter-term debt in there. But at the end of the day, we, we can say that on the fire station debt, um, that number, three, one point eight seven is gonna be a good number that we can apply.
Okay, and, and that, and the fire station debt was?
It was almost ten million dollars of the total.
I'm sorry?
It was almost ten million dollars, the entire bond issue.
Okay, uh, um, but there, there's, is, is the, is the, we'll be voting on a, on a, on a bill that's, is it, uh, twelve million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it, once again, it gets a little in the weeds. But here's what happens in the bond market. Um, Acton has very favorable debt. Um, you know, these coupons range between two and four or five percent. And basically, when, uh, we got the call today on the bonds, the bonds kind of spun about a, almost at eight or nine hundred thousand dollar premium. Now, the way state law works, we could have had a bond at a higher interest rate and pulled in close to a million dollars in cash to be used as a premium. John and I had talked over the last few months, and, you know, my recommendation, and John agreed, was no, let's buy down, you know, they call it resizing a bond issue. So exactly at the time when the bonds, when they called in their bond results, uh, our financial advisor basically worked with the underwriter and the waiting bidder to say, hey, you know what? We, we're not gonna borrow the, on Series A, thirteen point six nine five million. Chop it off, pay it down, and let's, let's, you know, let's buy that interest rate down. So that's essentially what happened. And that's why, even though the Series A bond issue power amount was thirteen point six nine five million, the vote on the Series A is for twelve million, nine eighty-five. There's a difference of about seven hundred and ten thousand. Our premium, I think, was about eight fifty, it was eight sixty. They can only resize so much with the underwriters and, you know, and, and the different, you know, the bidders. So they applied seven hundred and ten thousand of that premium to buy down that rate. And, um, that's where we ended up at the one eight seven. I think we'll still have maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of premium. That will be used for bond issuance costs. And down the road, we can, we can use that premium to offset other things. That was the most that they could kind of size up with the bond issue. But that's a great question, and that's why the vote amount doesn't hit that power amount. We told the financial advisor to pay down or resize that debt, which essentially also brings the rate down.
Okay. Jim?
Um, so we have this wonderful memo that's multiple pages, and I would be happy to make a motion of if someone could point me at which part of this multi-page document is the motion that should be made tonight.
Well, don't we have to vote on a num, take a number of votes tonight?
Looks like it.
Well, there's, Mr. Chairman and Jim, there's a vote of the Board of Selectmen, uh, which, as Jim says, it's four pages long. Um, I believe it has to be read. I think you can point to the, the power amounts and the dollar amounts as in the, you know, as in the document. But I actually need, unfortunately, somebody from the board to, uh, read, uh, you know, the clerk of the board or Selectmen to read this vote all the way through, uh, and then vote on it. But that, that would be just one vote we need, um, and I believe you have that.
Okay, we have that document. So what you're saying is, uh, uh, David is clerk, would need to read the four pages, and then we can vote on it as a whole. Is that correct?
It is, and that's the, that's how, that's how they make us do it.
That, 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 that's fine. I, I can read it quickly. There is one hand up also, John.
Sure, okay, uh, please.
Uh, Tara, please go ahead.
This is, this is Tara from West Acton. Steve actually answered my question over email while he was talking, if you can believe that. That's why I'm working off the peels. Uh, but I'll have to ban it anyway, just for the, the benefit of anybody who cares. Um, so first of all, congratulations. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, the question is, what about the school debt? And what about land, buying land and housing trust, et cetera? Are we, can we get this kind of rate for other things that we might like to invest in, in our community? Thank you.
Um, Steve?
Yeah, so, you know, school debt, other than I, you know, in terms of the school debt, I believe they issued debt last year about two weeks before we did. They were able to get their debt issued. I believe their total interest cost was two and an eighth, two and a quarter percent. So I believe we kind of came in under them. Um, to your point about issuing debt, sure, a town meeting approves certain things, you know, we can go back to the market. Uh, but they, you know, a town meeting approves all debt. But it was a very good sale today.
So better than it would have been a year ago, you, because you're a salesman.
Yeah, the, um, you know, I think, I think a year ago, I was, we were hoping at two and a quarter, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, somewhere around that, and I think that's where the school ended up settling on, on their debt issue. But, um, this is, this is pretty good news right now. It's real good news. Uh, it's gonna help bring down, uh, the expected increase in the tax bill. And, you know, it finalizes a, you know, two- or three-year odyssey for us where we had had some short-term, we had some bonding authorizations of small amounts. But we were waiting for a companion offering, and then when we got the size of the North Acton Fire Station, it was time to strike. And again, we were, we were held at the gate for a year, but a year later, we, we, we did just fine.
Okay, so, so basically, in, 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 in summary fashion, the, um, um, fourteen million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that we're voting on tonight, um, consist in, in one, um, one, the, the North Acton Fire Station, um, sidewalk, um, improvements, um, and fire equipment?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. It was, um, you know, there's a few things in there. There was the fire station, there was some land acquisition for Piper Lane in Kelly's Corner. There was, uh, some fire apparatus, streetwalk side improvements, some Kelly's Corner design, the HVAC system, uh, for one of the fire stations, and, um, some traffic design. That was the thirteen point six nine five. The other series was the one point one million for the nineteen dash twenty-one Maple Street land acquisition.
Okay, so there was additional, so the other, there were short-term borrowings that were rolled over into this?
Yeah, we, we had, you know, we, we received authorization at town meeting to borrow. We were advised that we needed some bandwidth, some power amount to bring to the bond market if we wanted to get some rate. Um, so we kind of accumulated, you know, some, some authorizations. And then the fire station authorization allowed us to go to the bond market. You know, it, they, they, you know, these big shops that buy the debt, they have to then go package it and resell it to consumers. So it's tough to go out to the bond market for half a million or a million dollars. I know that sounds strange, but, you know, this, the Commonwealth Office of Program, State House No Program, but they affix a five percent rate to it. So if we wanted to pay five percent, we could have done that over the life of the bonds. But we believed it was better, and, you know, John was instrumental in this. We, we believed it was better to hold on. And, you know, when we got the fire station debt, that was the real thing that made this go. And, uh, here we are.
So it's, so, so it's seventy-five, eighty percent of it was the fire station. There were sidewalk improvements, fire So it's, so, so it's seventy-five, eighty percent of it was the fire station. There were sidewalk improvements, fire equipment. There was a piece on Kelly's Corner?
Yeah, sure.
And, and what else?
No, that was about it. And it was, yeah, yeah, there's, you know, six or seven items, but you hit on all of them. Fire station, you know, Piper Lane, Kelly's Corner. Uh, there was two pieces of fire apparatus, sidewalk and street improvements. So, you know, there was, you know, a few things in there, but again, we cobbled them all together. We, we grabbed our bandwidth. And then, uh, with John Mandriar's help, we got to the markets. We secured our AAA. And, um, you know, we carried it, we carried the day.
Right, that's great. So, um, we'll have David read the three and a half pages and then we'll take a vote. Ready, David?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready. Just one clarification, Steve. Do you want me to read the numbers or not?
You know, Dave, I, I don't think you have to read the dollar amounts in those amounts. I think I would reference, you know, as stated in the, in the vote of the board as follows and, but I would read, I would just read the words.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to read the numbers if it's a legal requirement. Okay, um, I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Acton, Massachusetts, the town, certify at this meeting of the board held March first, twenty twenty-one, of which all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the twelve thousand, twelve million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of twenty twenty-one bond, series A of the town dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the series A bonds, to, our Robert W. Baird and Company, Inc., at the price of thirteen million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty and, uh, uh, dollars and fourteen cents, and accrued interest if any is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as shown in the document. Further voted that the series A bonds maturing ma- on March fifteenth, twenty forty-one, March fifteenth, twenty forty-six, and March fifteenth, twenty fifty, each a series A term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption as, uh, m- m- mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Series A term bonds due March fifteenth, twenty forty-one, uh, uh, in twenty forty, three hundred and ninety thousand, and twenty forty-one, three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Series A term bond due March fifteenth, twenty forty-six, in twenty forty-two, three hundred and eighty thousand, twenty forty-three, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, twenty forty-four, four hundred thousand, twenty forty-five, four hundred and five thousand. And twenty forty-six, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Series A term bonds due March fifteenth, twenty fifty, in twenty forty-seven, four hundred and twenty thousand, twenty forty-eight, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, twenty forty-nine, four hundred and five thousand, twenty fifty, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Further voted that the sale of the one million, one hundred thousand dollar general obligation land acquisition bond, series B of the town dated March fifteenth, twenty-one, two, twenty twenty-one, the series B bonds, and together with the series A bonds called the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets at the price of one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents, and accrued interest if any is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March fifteenth of the following years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows, as, as shown in the document. Further, further voted the series B bonds maturing on March fifteenth, twenty thirty-one, March fifteenth, twenty thirty-four, and March fifteenth, March fifteenth, twenty thirty-seven, and March fifteenth, twenty forty, each a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Series B term bond due March fifteenth, twenty thirty-one, in twenty thirty, sixty thousand dollars, in twenty thirty-one, sixty thousand dollars. Series B bond, uh, series B term bond due March fifteenth, twenty thirty-four, uh, in twenty thirty-two, sixty thousand dollars, in twenty thirty-three, fifty-five thousand dollars, in twenty thirty-four, fifty-five thousand dollars. Series B term bond due March fifteenth, um, twenty thirty-seven, uh, in twenty thirty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars, in twenty thirty-six, fifty-five thousand dollars, in twenty thirty-seven, fifty-five thousand dollars. Series B term bond due March fifteenth, uh, twenty forty, uh, in twenty thirty-eight, fifty-five thousand dollars, in twenty thirty-nine, fifty-five thousand dollars, in twenty forty, fifty-five thousand dollars. Further voted that in con- in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February twenty-second, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, and a final official statement dated March first, twenty twenty-one, the official statement. Each in such form may be approved by the town treasurer and be hereby and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and are hereby authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve. In such form as may be approved by the bond council to be, to the town, well, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and the bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer are hereby authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents that may be, uh, determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes taken, votes were taken at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place or method of assent, assent, assessing date and time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the votes, uh, above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or on the municipal building at which the office of the town clerk is located. Or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine, nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot zero three two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays and Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting, and that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in an executive session. All, all in accordance with, uh, uh, General Law's C thirty A eighteen to twenty-five as amended, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order dated March twelfth, twenty twenty, authorizing remote meetings during the COVID-nineteen related state of emergency if applicable.
Thank you very much.
Second. I, I think we need a motion to
We need, we need a motion.
Do, do we need to move each of these votes separately, or can we move the, all the votes as stated in?
Steve said we could, we could vote them all as one.
So I think, I think someone needs to, to move to, to, to take, uh, uh, all the votes as I just read.
Yes.
I would like to move that we take all the votes as just read. Second.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that was really powerful magic spell that you just read, David. Uh, I'm not sure what exactly what it meant, but it had a, it reverberated a lot. It's clearly very, a very effective and important spell.
Put him over a beer from Rapschallian after.
But you missed the second page and you want me to read it again?
Okay, so, um, David, if you, um, with enough energy, call the roll, please.
Sure, uh, Mr. Snyder Grant.
Aye.
Ms. Gardner.
Aye.
Mr. Charter.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
And I also say aye. So we approve those, uh, bond issuances unanimously.
Um, John, when would you like us to come by and, um, and make the necessary signings?
So we'll, we'll be in touch with you when the documents are prepared. Uh, I think it might be Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you for all the good, very good work.
It's job, Steve.
Our, our next item is the presentation of the Town Manager's proposed FY twenty-two budget and capital plan. Uh, John?
Hi, uh, so can, uh, am I, people hear me?
Yeah.
All right, good. So, um, very excited to, uh, present this budget here this evening. I mentioned earlier that, uh, preparing this budget was, uh, unique in that, uh, we were doing it in a little pandemic. Uh, and we've done it sort of in a different process than normally we would, uh, but I'm really happy with uh, what I think we're going to be presenting tonight. And I really appreciate all the work that everyone did to help me get here, uh, across the organization, the departments, divisions, staff in my office, everyone's really been tremendous. So it's, it's been a, a great effort and, um, so the Town Manager's budget is a, is a big deal. It's one of the most important things I do. And, um, the first three times I've done it, or maybe two, all the previous times I've done it, I've done it in the town meeting, uh, group two oh four. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, I kept that tradition. So I'm here back in two oh four. I hope to see you all here again soon, uh, but I'm here tonight and, uh, it's nice to be back. So, uh, another thing that I wanted to do, and I asked the chair if it was okay, is I have a lot of information to share with you about the budget, and this is going to be, uh, the most content you've probably ever seen for annual budget, uh, request and capital plan. There's hundreds of pages of, of content and data, and we're really excited to, to show it all to you. But I think it's really important to ta- just take a moment and recognize all the work that we did this year leading up to this point. And so it won't take long, I promise. But I just wanted to go through a couple of images to take us back. And again, the pandemic isn't over. We're certainly working very hard. That, you know, vaccines are, are just starting to, uh, work out for everybody. But since this is a, a milestone, I wanted to just mark it with, with some reflection. So I, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. So, you know, one thing that we did, uh, throughout this pandemic is, was we found new ways to connect with people, whether it's signs that uh, Corey York and a team of others put together and posted all over town to help remember people to be safe, or our social media campaigns to try to get people to wear masks. Uh, we, we continue to find new ways to, to do that. Uh, you know, our, our employees, uh, were out there, out and about. Uh, this is police officers, uh, meeting with the local business. The one on the right is the fire department supporting the, uh, Acton Box Borough seniors on their graduation, their rolling rally graduation day. Uh, so, uh, this is a vaccine clinic, one of the few that we've held that were very successful, our, our deputy chief and one of our nurses. Uh, this is just some interactions we've had, you know, a lot of stuff in cars and outside, uh, helping people with, with drive-bys at the senior center, uh, helping different people, uh, in different parts of town. Uh, another vaccine clinic, uh, a lot of team, team members helped dealt with these clinics. Uh, we had a huge response when we asked for help and, uh, it's been going really well and we hope to continue to do those. You know, we, we provide services differently with buildings closed. We had to innovate and find new ways. So we put some jersey barriers out, so, and, uh, some tents, and we put people outside and provided customer service outside. When it got too cold, we moved inside to the windows. And then, um, as I mentioned, since it's been frigid, we've been meeting, just meeting people periodically in the parking lot. We'll continue to innovate. Uh, we've, you know, a lot of different things, just some imagery. There's, uh, uh, Joan, uh, Selectman, Selectman Gardner with, uh, doing the lottery for the small business, uh, grants. Uh, that's one of the, that's some of the gear that we got for our fire department to keep them safe. And, you know, uh, a lot of work we did with, with different people. Uh, the elections were a huge deal. Uh, running an election, as you know, is a complicated, I mean, there's a lot of logistics. Running an election during a pandemic is, is so much more. And so Eva and her team and Austin and Gail and Kristen Alexander, all the people that helped, uh, those things go smoothly. It was all staff. I mean, we had a lot of great senior workers that were able to come out. Um, we'll always do, and we appreciate that they, they stuck with us. But a lot of, a lot of people weren't able to do it. A lot of election workers uh, weren't able to join us because of, of the pandemic, and we had a lot of staff step in. So I was really excited to see. Again, we, this, there was three elections. So this was the, the first one I showed was the, the presidential. This is the presidential primary. We also did in-person voting, which was a huge task. It took a lot of people and a lot of effort. Uh, this was town meeting. Uh, this was the second outdoor town meeting, uh, that we held in September. And, um, you know, these are pictures that I think we'll look at someday and it'll, it'll really be, it'll mean something special. So I wanted to include some of these in this budget. Uh, because it was a special time and I think we got a lot accomplished considering what we were, uh, the environment that we were working within. This was the first meeting, the delayed, uh, annual meeting that we held in June. That was another inside-outside. This is the inside portion, uh, where you can see a few people were in there. And this was the outside portion, uh, that day. It was, it was, if you remember, it was going to start to rain and we were getting worried that we would have to, uh, do something. And fortunately, the rain helped out, or maybe it just drizzled a little bit and we, we, we toughed through it. Another election, again, people working, uh, trying to make people safe and, and have the ability to vote and exercise their rights to vote. Uh, we put signs up in every language to try to tell people that the building closed and direct them to resources. We, we launched a hotline, which was very successful in, in communicating to our residents and giving them support and assistance. This is going way back, uh, to the last time the board was in this building, uh, as a group. Uh, and this is one of the last meetings that we held in here, uh, where the board declared a, a, a state of emergency, uh, retroactively. And I think this is the, a couple of days earlier when we held the joint meeting with the Board of Health and and the Board of Selectmen to sort, sort this out. I think the day was March sixteenth, so it was right, right in the middle of all this. And you know, we had some staff meetings. This is when we were still meeting in person without masks. Uh, we had a, a great, uh, planning session with staff and, and Box Borough and Act- Acton Box Borough Regional School District. So just a little refraction, a little reflection of all the work that we did. And it's not over. Um, that, that line graph is still, uh, going. And we need to be, you know, careful and thoughtful about, uh, our residents and help, help them get safe and vaccinated. But I just wanted to take a minute to reflect on some of the great work that we've done in addition to this, uh, budget that I'm about to present. So, um, onto the budget. Actually, not quite onto the budget. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention is that we did a lot to support businesses. I think, uh, we're very proud that we won the award this year from Mass Municipal for innovating and, uh, helping small businesses through several of our programs. One thing I hope that everybody has an opportunity to check out is the video tour that we posted on our website. Uh, this, there's a little icon on the bottom here. This is Acton Video Tour. That's right on our homepage. And if you click on it, you can see different, uh, scenes in Acton and different people in Acton, uh, talking. So it's really worth checking out. Uh, so, a lot of big events happened over the last year. Uh, we, we did the groundbreaking for the North Acton Fire Station. This is a project that's been, uh, contemplated for decades, and we're very excited to to break ground on it and get started. And if you're driven by lately, you'll see that it's, it's certainly underway. Uh, so we had a great ceremony that day. We did it safely. We had town officials, we had state officials, we had former, a former chief, uh, Craig was there, uh, which was great to see. Uh, we, we did a formal groundbreaking, tossed the dirt with a lot of people. So it was a lot of fun and it was a great milestone and, and we're excited to celebrate, uh, with all of you. Ace of Fire and House, this is one of my favorite projects, so I can't have a presentation without mentioning it. But if you look very closely at this picture, it's a before and after. On the left is what it looked like, um, a year ago, and on the right is what it looks like now. Uh, we've, we've completed the selective demolition of that building, and now we're very actively involved in the reuse planning. It will be coming to the Board of Selectmen this spring with some ideas on how to, how to use that space as an amenity, uh, for the community and for the complex of, of the town hall and the library and everyone else that's here every day. So some other recent highlights, as we just discussed, uh, our AAA ratings were reaffirmed, which is a big deal. As you can see, it led to some significantly, uh, lower, uh, interest rates. Uh, we received a two point seven five million dollar grant from Mass Works, which is something we've actually been applying for, for three years. So I'm really excited that we were successful this year. Uh, we supported our residents and businesses through the pandemic. We, we held elections, uh, we did some sidewalk work. This is a section of Great Road that people were very excited to see built and, and we're working on other sections of Great Road and other places in town, uh, as we speak. Our police department achieved a very high honor. Uh, a few weeks ago, actually, they received accreditation, which is a very high standard of, um, professional conduct and policies that they, uh, have proved to this accrediting a- agency that, that they meet the marks for. So it's really exciting, uh, that they've, uh, they have a very professional department. And this is just another example of how, how we have a very professional department. We acquired new open space on Piper Lane, uh, which was a town meeting vote last year. We hired our first, uh, sustainability director, which is a big deal. She's already doing a ton of great work with, uh, She's already doing a ton of great work with, I'm sure she's already talked to many of you about projects that we're working on, and it's great to have that resource here in Town Hall. Nineteen and twenty-one Maple Street, that's a building that we acquired next to the train station. We had a very impressive presentation from our consultants last week about some ideas that we have for how to reuse that building to maximize parking and then provide for another creative use in the, the main building. So we look forward to talking to the Board of Selectmen about that this spring as well. And Austin Seganowicz took the lead on an auction, and we sold all kinds of old equipment from the Public Works yard, and we generated more than $75,000 in a year that we needed revenue. So that was huge, and it cleaned up the yards over in DPW, which was great. So every year when we develop the budget, one of the key guiding documents is the Board of Selectmen goals. And, you know, these are the goals, I'm sure you all remember, the short, we have, with eleven short-term goals and eight long-term goals. And, and when we develop the budget, we send it out to all departments and say, you know, as you're preparing your budget request, make sure you're addressing these goals. And they did a, a great job in doing that. We have requests that we'll be talking about later that I think address most of the goals, and I look forward to talking more about it with you. One thing that happened this year is that we had this revenue come in from the federal government through the CARES program, and that allowed us to slow down. You know, right when this happened, we took measures, when the pandemic started, just, just under a year ago, we put a spending freeze in and a hiring freeze, because we thought we were going to have to spend all of our money on all the things related to COVID-19. Fortunately, what happened was this, this funding came in, and all the expenses we had that were related to COVID-19, we were able to utilize this funding to cover them, which allowed us to maintain capacity in our operating budget and have a substantial turnback last year. And all the expenses that we're incurring this year are going to be treated the same way. And so as you can see on this table, we received just over $2 million, and we have about $490,000 remaining this year, which we have until the end of December to spend that. And it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not, because there's a lot of expenses that related to testing and vaccination and everything else that we'll be doing over the next nine months or so, that this will be an important resource for us to have to continue to provide relief from our operating budget. So as I mentioned, in the budget development process, we look to address Board of Selectmen goals. We ask the departments to work on a long-term capital needs assessment, target investments on things that help this better leverage coordination that we try to establish within the departments, and several other goals that the departments were given as they developed their budgets. And, you know, as we worked on it, there were challenges. You know, we had the pandemic and the, and the concerns about what it may do to our revenues and our economic uncertainty. The Middlesex County Pension Assessment, that continues to accelerate in the assessments we get this year. This year it went up eight percent, which is almost, is $367,000, which is a lot, that's a lot, relative to our entire budget. So that, that's something that we have to work around. We have a dam on the River Street property that we're trying to use grant funding to help address, but that is always a looming concern, that if we're not successful getting grants, we'll have to find ways to fund what's needed there. We have a few collective bargaining agreements that are not settled. The issue with the delay in issuing the debt actually worked out in our favor, as Steve just mentioned. But certainly, we didn't know that until today, and so that's something that we were concerned about. That, that turned out pretty well. So I'm really excited to announce ten, ten priorities that the FY twenty-two budget is gonna address through investments. We're going to invest in resources to support diversity, equity, inclusion efforts. We're going to support the Kelly's Corner project by funding the pedestrian light poles. We're going to continue to support sustainability initiatives to address our climate emergency. We're going to add resources to the police department to support mental health needs. We're going to propose to do the construction of the town center, construction of the intersection and the triangle to, to rework that with, with what was proposed and discussed recently. We're going to advance the process for designing a new public works facility or, or renovated public works facility. We're going to aggressively pursue tree planting and maintenance programs. We're going to continue to target economic development. We're going to work on that dam on the River Street property, and we're going to turn that property into a historic park. And we're going to continue to invest in sidewalks and traffic calming initiatives. So I, I encourage you to dive into the budget document, which we'll be publishing tonight or in the morning, which goes into great detail on each of these items. And then tonight, I'm just going to go into a couple, summary of a few of them. The first is equity inclusion. So the Board of Selectmen in August established an equity, diversity, equity, inclusion commission, and in November adopted a policy against racism. In that policy, it said that the town, in its actions, budgets, and bylaws, and policies, and purchasing decisions, will continue to consider and strive to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion. So in the, in the FY twenty-two budget, we've proposed funding to implement any recommendations that come from this diversity commission, and their, I think their reports are expected this fall. We're also going to do a needs assessment of our organization. We know that there's a, a need for some type of diversity officer or diversity position in the organization, but we don't want to just hire somebody and plug them in. We want to take some time, figure out how it fits in, how it should fit into our organizational structure in the way that makes the most sense. So we're going to do that, and then if that all works out, we would move forward on a recruitment process. So that's, that's the, the goal there. The, the amount that we're dedicating towards that effort is $85,000. With Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Project, the final local investment that we'll need for this project is to pay for the light poles, which are considered a non-participating item by Mass DOT. The state is investing nearly $20 million to redo that entire stretch of Acton, which you're all familiar with the project. But one key component to the aesthetic and the safety and the functionality of this project is pedestrian scale level light poles. There's a rendering shown here that we're, we're going to continue to work on better renderings to share with you. But basically, they, they tie together the safety and needs and, and make it safer for pedestrians, help with traffic calming for vehicles. And so how we're proposing to pay for this is that we are proposing to borrow $500,000, and we're proposing to reappropriate some funding remaining from articles that were approved in prior years. And with, one of the reasons that we have funding available from prior year approvals is that we worked very hard to get Mass DOT to understand how committed we are to the project. And as a result, they actually agreed to cover a lot of design costs that we initially thought we were going to have to pay for. So it was, it was due to our hard work that we had this extra resource freed up, and we'd like to reapply it to help invest in these light poles, which are a critical part of the Kelly's Corner plan. And so as you know, this project is scheduled to go at the bid this winter, the very end of the year, and they should have a contractor onboard and start it in early 2022. And so we need to tell the state whether we're in, in terms of investing in these light poles or not. So it's a, it's an exciting project, and I look forward to talking more with the board about this. The next item is sustainability. As I mentioned, we have a sustainability director, and we're going to fund that position in the twenty-two budget in a more formal way. We're going to invest in a fleet replacement program to get, to sooner get to the point where we have an entirely electric and hybrid fleet. We've been doing a pretty good job, particularly in police, where I believe more than 50% of their, their patrol cruisers are hybrid now. We want to bring the rest of the departments along, and so we're going to invest money in that every year in our, in your capital plan. We're also going to transition all of our municipal electricity accounts to the APC 100% green option. There's an incremental cost to this, but we believe, given the, the climate emergency declared earlier, I guess last year, and the policy direction of the board as it relates to the environmental sustainability policy, that this investment is consistent with both of those concepts. We're also going to look at more EV charger infrastructure, and we're, use, we're going to use sustainability funding as matching funds for grants. Another very important thing that sustainability funding will be used for is to cover the incremental costs that are necessary to help make normal decisions that we make, normal purchasing decisions, to, to cover any extra cost to make the environmentally friendly decision. And that's an important component, because we're always trying to maximize the funding that we have. And if we have this resource to help make sure that sustainability practices are, are implemented in purchasing, it's, I think it'll go a long way. Mental health resources for the police department. So I'm really excited to announce that, working with Chief Barrows and the leadership in the police department, we've established a new liaison program. This program, the purpose of this program is to partner with outside organizations and become, have, create a very close relationship with underserved communities and other groups, and just be out there in the community. It's, it's basically take, it's community policing, but to a whole new level, and really being out there and getting more people involved in matters that the police department is working on. And we have staffing already to accomplish that. It's just going to require a little reorganization, which, which is described in more detail in the budget. We're also going to put some more funding towards our jail diversion clinician and continue to support programs such as Domestic Violence Services Network and Communities for Restorative Justice. The thing that's interesting about the mental health needs of our community is that if you look at this chart, the blue line graph, or the blue line on this chart shows the number of physical arrests going back 10 years. And over the last three or four years, we started tracking Section 12s, which is basically when an individual needs to be taken into custody to be brought to the hospital, because they, they may harm themselves or others. And if you look, that we're actually doing just as many Section 12 responses as we are normal physical arrest responses. So it really speaks to the need that we have in this community, and I think in most communities, to, to address mental health needs and to provide resources to do so. Another, another investment that we're proposing is to, to do the construction of the proposed plans that were presented recently for Acton Town Center. The big change here would be to make one way, would make it one-way traffic on Concord Road, to almost make it serve as a, as a rotary at that portion, so that people are going one way there. And there would be some significant changes to the curb alignments at the Newtown Road and Woodbury intersections to make it much safer. If anybody's ever pulled out of Newtown Road, they know why we're, we're advancing this design forward, because it's, it's something that people have been looking for. And it, it was a Board of Selectmen goal to look at this, so we're proposing to invest in it this year. Through borrowing, the estimated cost is $886,000. We're proposing to borrow for that to pay for the cost. We're also proposing economic development initiatives. I already talked about Kelly's Corner, but we're also working with the Town of Maynard on a corridor study for Powder Mill Corridor, and we're going to use Mass Works grant funding to help support complete streets improvements along that stretch of road, in addition to the sewer work that we're doing for that project. We're also going to invest in wavefinding to support local businesses. During the Kelly's Corner project, we, you know, understand that sometimes during major construction projects, businesses are impacted. So we're being proactive, and we're developing plans to try to help our businesses and marketing campaigns. And if you look at the bottom of this slide, you know how a lot of times construction sites have fencing, and they just have green screens on the fencing? We're proposing to put some, something like this to try to make people feel like, this is, even though this is a construction area, this is still a welcoming place, and it's an exciting thing, and get people to be excited about it during the construction process. We're also going to work to invest $20,000 to support vacant storefronts and use that funding as matching to a state program that we've been trying to access for a few years. And we're going to continue to invest in sidewalks, which have an economic development benefit. Trees, trees. We're gonna, we're gonna, through the projects that are planned, Kelly's Corner being a major one, where there's 168 plus, or thereabouts, trees being proposed. We're also, over three years, going to plant 25 trees as part of the Historic Streetscape Program, funded through the CPA funds. We've also started an adopted tree program where we're projecting about eight trees to be planted. This year, we've already received seven requests, so we have one more, if anybody's interested. And also, there's a proposed project to add a lot of trees to Jones Field to help with shading and other benefits of trees over there. So I keep talking about the budget book. I, I encourage you to check it out. There's, there's a lot of good stuff in here. We've tried to add a lot of data and a lot of context and details so that people that really want to dive in have the ability to do that. So I, I should, I don't expect you to read this slide, because it's very small, but if you, when you download the budget book tomorrow morning, you'll be able to look at all this stuff. And we have revenue assumptions, we have detailed information about our tax levy and how it's calculated, and different financial metrics that we have published sort of in places. But the goal here was to get them all in one place, so that as you're reviewing the budget, you can also look at some of the financial data that's associated with our budget and what we're proposing. Another feature is we've added a lot of detail to the org charts and to the FTEs. It's very important to me to be as transparent as possible in our budgets, and this is just another example of adding a layer, a layer of transparency to the process. Data, metrics. I showed you the police metric earlier about trends in arrests and Section 12s, and that told a story, and it helped us understand why investing in mental health needs is important. And we've included data like this in all of our budgets and all of our departments, so that if we're proposing things, or if there's things that we're trying to explain, this, the data that we're presenting is just another way for us to explain it to our residents and help them understand the services that we're providing on an annual basis. We've been very successful in, in getting grants in, in every department. We all work hard. We have some good grant writing talents in the organization, and we're actually now tracking it in a grant tracker, which we've published in, in the new budget, which I look forward to checking out. And then a big effort, which I think if I could do it all over again, I probably wouldn't do a 10-year capital plan at the same time as a budget during a pandemic. But this year, we're very excited to release our first 10-year capital improvement plan, and it took a lot of work from a lot of people. We were able to work with a consultant through a grant we received from the Community Compact Program. The biggest part of it was a capital needs assessment, where each department had to submit all their needs for the next 10 years. And then in this document, we've included our investment strategy over 10 years. We've created sort of inventory and asset updates, so people know what, what assets we have, what buildings we have, what vehicles we have, what parks we have, so that when we're talking about new projects, they can compare that to what we already have. But it's a really useful document this year, but I think it's going to be even more useful going forward as we, as we continue to update it and add new information to it. So in the, in the 10-year capital plan, we received 123 project requests, which accounted for around $68 million across all funding sources over 10 years. So this is just a pie chart to show you kind of the mix of where things were. A lot of it was vehicles and equipment and facilities. There was some IT and some transportation items. The recommended capital plan that I'm recommending to the town, you know, is $75 million investment over 10 years, and that's a, that's a sticker shock, so hold on a second. A lot of that is funding from other sources. For example, 16 or 17 million of that is the Kelly's Corner project and how it's funded from the state. And then a lot of other, of, of the funding is grants and other sources that are not part of the general fund. And so in '22, there's 20.6 million in projects. Again, Kelly's Corner is a large component of that, and Mass Works is also part of that. But from the actual general fund, there'll be an impact of just over 1.2 million, and we're recommending that we appropriate from free cash 793,997 for capital projects. And the, the capital plan will be published tomorrow as well, with the full details of everything that's in there. So here's the, the main slide, the budget slide. So I talked through some of the investments, I talked through the capital. What we're proposing to do this year is a, is an overall spending package that's a 2.5% increase over last year. And the way that breaks down is, our municipal operations, we are able to hold to a 2.82% increase. And the way that breaks down is our municipal operations, we were able to hold to a 2.82% increase. And that was not as easy as, as it sounds. A lot of departments had to make a lot of hard choices and they were very accommodating and helped us get to a point where we could get the numbers down. We also fine tuned our subsidies a little bit. We've been doing okay in our subsidies and, and we relooked at some of the numbers and we made some changes and reorganizations in how we do transportation. As a result, we were able to reduce that one, to, to reduce that number a little bit. As I mentioned, the, the capital request is 790,000. So in total, 3, 37,786,832, which equates to a 2.5% increase over last year. And here is the meeting room that's been vacant, waiting for all of us to come back. This is what it looked like for the last year. So thank you for listening and I look forward to your comments and feedbacks. And so this is just the beginning. My presentation to the board tonight is the first look at the budget. I look forward to having a dialogue with the board tonight and then the finance committee and everyone else leading up to the process that goes to town meeting. And thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, John. Questions and comments from board members?
Thank you, that was excellent presentation. I really appreciate it.
Yes, John, if you could just send your, the slideshow to us this evening, is that possible?
Yes.
Yeah. Jim?
Sure. Well, I mean, I'm really looking forward to, you know, diving into the whole budget book and, and, and developing some more specific questions. But just a couple that have occurred to me as listening to this. I'm, I'm wondering whether we're planning any investment in developing our, our tourism. It seems like there's a history tourism industry that, you know, is particularly big in Concord and Lexington, and it should be big in Acton. I mean, you know, we're awesome too in exactly the same ways as they are. So I was wondering if that was part of the upcoming investments?
That's a great question and that's something that I'm pretty excited to try to get into that level of planning. There is a few projects, historic wayfinding that we're working on. And also I, I was trying to propose a arts plan to help incorporate public arts in the community. Funding didn't really work out for, for that. And when it comes to requests, sometimes mine, I take mine off before others. But what, what we're going to do is that all the projects that I just mentioned, we're going to try to incorporate some of those components in, into them and continue to look for ways to address that idea that Acton is a destination or, and it will become more of a destination as we continue to provide these great amenities.
Great, thank you. One other question, just sort of looking forward in the planning with the police department. So you, you talked about, you know, another person who's going to be part of the jail diversion program. I'm wondering if there's planning for changes or funding associated with first responders for mental health situations? It seems like there's a lot of cases where having people show up who aren't police or don't dress like police can help with de-escalation significantly. And I wondered if that was part of the conversation that's happening?
Absolutely, that's the goal of the liaison group is liaison is going to be those people that don't necessarily dress like police or if they do, they, they act, act in a way that they try to be more involved in things that the police don't typically involve in, I guess is the best way to put it. And just regards to the jail diversion clinician, it's, it's, it's a pretty horrible name for a position, if you ask me. That's how we had to call it. The person in that role is, does a lot of important work. And we're actually sharing her with five, several communities. And so what, what we're working on with Chief Burrows is we've added some more funding to that to try to get more of her time or all of her time, which may not be possible, but that's the goal. Because I think it's an important service. There was a nice feature in the local paper this week that, that talked about this very thing and the work that they're doing and we wanted to continue.
Thank you.
Joan? Joan, any questions? No, David?
No, nothing for me. I'm, I need to read the whole budget book first.
Okay, Dean?
Yeah, same thing. It's a lot of reading, a lot of homework to do over the next couple of weeks. Not as much as John's done, but one quick question with the, it's a very modest increase you're looking at. I mean, this, this is really very reassuring and certainly should strike a nice bell with the taxpayers, especially with the tough situation a lot of people are in right now. Are you included in that budget? Are you providing any new employees or new positions?
So the, in terms of new employees, I, I mean, one position that was added in '21 will be formally part of the budget. So that's sort of a new position. It's more funding towards a new position. The other position that we're proposing is 85,000 for diversity resource. But again, that's proposed as a capital item, not as part of an operating budget because we want to do some work to determine what makes sense and how it makes sense and how it may fit in best into the organization. We may find for some reason that there's other ways that we can do it. But I think what we'd like to do is hear from the DEIC and any recommendations that, that come from that process, hear what the board has to say about those recommendations and have a resource to be able to implement anything that requires funding from that process. And then as a separate process, I'd like to do some work with an outside group to look at our organization, the way it's set up and the needs that we have associated with diversity, equity, inclusion. And there are needs, we've, we've talked about them in different ways. And we'd like to have a formal sort of look at that and what's the best way to address them with adding a staff resource. So that's, that's the project. So it's not necessarily an FTE, but it's, it's a capital request that certainly would probably lead to one.
Thank you. While we're on the DEIC, I just wanted to observe that I attended the, and participated in the training program last Friday with, I think about 50 fellow staff members and board and committee members. And it was really well done. I think, you know, I, three hours went by very quickly and I think there's a lot of things that could be followed up on, but I, I want to compliment you on putting that together and what a nice job they did.
Thank you, yeah. You know, the, the training is, is important and we need to do it every year. And the thing that, that I, I'm going to say tomorrow night, when I introduce it for the second time, is that we all come to this in different, from different places and in different levels of understanding. And, and the purpose of these trainings is to try to elevate everybody from, from where they were to, to just having more knowledge about it. So some people don't need as much training as others or, or experience, but I think it's great to have this and get all together. It's fun, even though it's a virtual meeting, it's nice to be with a big group of people and, and talk about important topics. So thanks for the, thanks for that feedback.
Well, I think, you know, just to follow up a little more, I think, you know, they covered a lot of good material and, and made some very interesting points that, connections that people probably hadn't made in the past. And they did it in a very nice, non-threatening manner. So, you know, I think, I was certainly impressed with what a nice job they did with it. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I was there as well. And I, John, I, I thought the two people who ran the program, the co-leaders, were just, you know, excellent and, you know, made, you know, I think, you know, all of us feel at ease and comfortable and willing to share and speak. With respect to the budget, you said there were hard choices that department heads had to make. What items didn't make it into the budget?
Sure. You know, the fire department for a few years now has been looking for ways to increase staffing to help respond to the needs of the community. And again, this year, we weren't able to add any more staffing. We're in a position now that we have vacancies that we're trying to fill. So as much as I think we, you know, we hope to try to add staffing at some point in the future, I think it's most important to focus on getting our, our existing vacancies filled up and we'll continue to work on ways to, to help in that area going forward. Other, other budget and project requests, a lot of mostly project requests that didn't, didn't make the final cut. And I can go into more detail on that afterwards. But I think overall, the departments understood. I mean, think about it, but we started in March with a spending freeze and a hiring freeze. So when I went to the, when I issued the guidance on how to bring back the budgets, I think they were already in a frame of mind where they weren't asking for new things because of what we were up against. So I don't think I had to say no to as many things I would have otherwise in another year. Because I think our staff did a really good job of, of understanding the situation that we're in and knowing that we need to try to deliver a budget this year that, that isn't too much perverted.
Was the one new position we added for FY '21, was that the Sustainability Director?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so David?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, you know, as, as you, you know, there were some promotions and things this year. As you backfill those and as you look over the, over our responsibilities, are any reorganization of responsibilities covered in your budget book? Like if you decide to move the responsibility for a particular operation from one department to another or change how it's staffed or something like that? Are those covered in the budget book?
So in the budget book, we covered a few that we've already implemented. Some, some reorganizations in public works and facilities that we've implemented to try to better align the, the needs with the resources. But we will certainly always, we always look at what we need after there's a vacancy that occurs. And there has been a few that just occurred recently with some promotions. So we're, we're closely at that. We haven't developed plans and put them in this budget, but it's something that we're working on actively and I'll certainly bring to the board anything that we decide to do and to make sure that everybody's comfortable. But that is an opportunity that we have. It's nice to have that opportunity when there's a vacancy and we can really take a second look and, and make sure it's fitting in the right spot and, and maybe use that resource in other ways if it makes sense.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions? Are there any audience questions or comments?
Nobody has their hand up, John.
Okay, thank you. John?
Oh, one, one hand just went up.
Sure, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, Tom Glazier. There, there was one issue that had come up. I think it was CPC asked if the $25,000 matching contribution from the, from the town for the dog park to match the Stanton grant. CPC didn't seem to want to cover that. They were looking for it to come out of the, the town budget. Is, would that be included in the town budget? Your proposed budget?
Oh, no, we, we, development of this budget, that was a CPC request and we were focusing on other priorities. It's news to me that that's not being considered any longer by CPC. We certainly will address the needs to fund that if we have to and we have time if, if we need to make any changes.
Uh, Tom? Tom Glazier, please, who is Chair of the Dog Park Committee?
Yeah, Tom, you just have to unmute yourself. Sorry, yes, thank you, John.
Please.
Sure, so the CPC has a, you know, tough decision to make this year specifically around funds for the recreation projects. And so their request that the town consider covering the 25K match came out of that, you know, challenge that they're facing. So it wasn't a we will, we won't sort of thing. It was just, can we look around and make sure that we can get as much done as possible through all mechanisms? I hope that makes sense.
Okay, so are we clear, are we clear then? Dean, as our?
Right. Well, just last week, we heard the last of the, the applications. Next week, we have our first session where we start really digging into the projects. That's sort of a plenary session. And then the week after, the, two weeks after that, we'll start doing a spreadsheet, start to allocate money. So there's been, as far as the virtues of any particular project, other than the questions that are asked during the presentations, there's been no discussion whatsoever. No consensus reached. It, you know, just our general guidance is that, you know, we've got a, there's a delta of about a million dollars between what was asked for and what we have to allocate. So we've asked everybody to go back and, you know, fine tooth comb your projects, sharpen your pencil as much as possible. And if you can find some other place to get the money, why, this is a good time to start thinking about that. But no decisions have been made.
Well, with respect to the dog park, since we sent that up as our top recreation project, should we, and we wish to continue to support it, is there an expectation that the $25,000 Stanton match should be coming from town funds?
I don't, you know, I, I think that was a, a point that was raised by one or two members. But I think CPC appreciates the guidance given by the Board of Selectmen, but ultimately, the members of CPC are going to make their own decisions on it. So we certainly see, putting on my hat as a CPC member, we understand what your priorities are. And, and we'll deal with it accordingly. But as you know, John, from your tenure on, you never know what's going to come out of it.
That's fair. Particularly when there's the, the asks are $1 million more than the funds available to give out. Thank you. So are there any other budget questions from the audience? John, thank you very much. If you would just send along your slide presentation tonight to us.
Thank you. I want to take that opportunity again to thank the finance team and all the department heads for all the help in, in manager's office. You'll see the amount of production that went into it and I appreciate all the efforts.
We thank you and the team as well. Okay, John, I think you're back up. Discuss the proposal to connect the West Acton Citizens Library to the Minuteman Network and required multi-party agreement.
I guess I'll stay standing. So earlier this week, or I guess it was last week, we met with the Board of Library Trustees for the Acton Memorial Library to talk about the idea of the West Acton Citizens Library accessing the vast resources available through the Minuteman Library Network and doing so through the Memorial Library's existing relationship. So you're, most people are probably familiar with it, but Minuteman Network gives us, people in Acton, access to books all over the, you know, the Boston metro area. We can get stuff from the Boston Public Library and all kinds of different libraries all over the place through this network. And West Acton doesn't have, the Citizens Library does not have access to that network. They have the 7,500 books or so that they have and they're good books, but they don't have access to this network that provides residents in West Acton and, and residents generally with access to more materials in that historic library. So the goal was to do that for West Acton, to get the patrons that go there, the access to that ability to those resources. The problem is it's cost prohibitive. For West Acton Library to go in by itself, it was, I think, $26,000 and then it was going to be $10,000 or $11,000 a year, which is a pretty big expense for a small library. But if it goes in as underneath the relationship the Memorial Library already has, the costs go down significantly, I think to, to 16,000 the first year and then 2,500 or so annually. So a significant savings to cost, significant savings to taxpayers if we're able to use that partnership to get access to those books and resources and digital materials. The good news is, is that both the Citizens Library Trustees and the Memorial Library Trustees appeared to be in favor of the concept, conceptually. Uh I think they are both going to take a formal vote uh when they have a chance to further review the actual agreement that's required, but I think it's really good news uh in terms of providing resources to our residents and it's good news for the Citizens Library uh who I think during the pandemic, they really um understood the limitations that were uh present when they don't have access to that network. Um so it's good news. It's really just an update to the board to make sure you knew that those meetings happen and that they will be happening and that uh sometime this spring, um I will I will be a party to a multi-party agreement uh with the, if if everybody agrees, the trustees from the Royal Library, the trustees from the Citizens Library and the Minuteman uh agency and then the town manager is the fourth party. So I guess I wanted to check in now to make sure that there wasn't going to be concerns with me doing that uh before we go too much further along.
So is it a sense you you you, will you want our sense as to um whether we would support this new arrangement?
Yes, please.
Okay, so uh questions or comments from board members? Jim?
Um, no, no questions, uh just the comment that I think this is a great move. It's been a while coming and I'm really glad that everyone's done all the work necessary to to make this happen.
Dean?
Yeah, speaking as a selectman and as a former trustee of the West Acton Citizens Library, I think this is great. Um, this has been something that has been in the works for for years, something we've always wanted to do and uh and, you know, I'm glad that the parties have all come together. I'm a hundred percent in favor of it.
Now, Joan?
Yeah, I sit as the selectman liaison to both libraries and I'm very enthusiastic that everyone is on board with this. I think it's an important addition to the town.
Uh David?
Yeah, I I also think this is a great idea. Give the, you know, the, you know, a lot of people live within walking distance of the Citizens Library and now they can walk and get a book from Cambridge. Um and so um I think it's great.
Yeah, I I served as liaison in my first year on the board and um it serves two elementary, the library serves two elementary schools and three neighborhoods and uh you know, the thing it was lacking was really access to the Minuteman Network and this is the most, you know, the best bang for the buck. The discussion I had heard was it's 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 like during the financial crisis, a non-bank bank, this is a non-branch brand, so. But let's, yeah, I think we're all but we're all behind it, so please go forward.
Thank you for that feedback. I'll report back on uh progress. It should be next month, or I guess this month, or early or early April.
Thank you. Okay, so um item seven for tonight, and this is a uh Dean asked that it be put on the menu, discuss the drive-up windows zoning bylaw proposal. Dean?
Thank you. Um, I really asked for this to be put down as a placeholder. Um, I had hoped to get a meeting together with uh Kristen Guchard and Robert Honnold from the Planning Department. That's not going to happen for another couple of days, so I don't actually have anything to report. I have seen some emails going around that there might be some people that, you know, have might be attending the meeting tonight and might want to make some statements or they might have emailed something to us. So certainly we could consider that, uh failing that. If we could just put this on as a placeholder for our next meeting, why that would be fine.
That would be March fifteenth.
Yeah.
That would give you enough time?
Yeah, I I mean, really, I have nothing to report at this point.
Okay, but it was there, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to offer opinions or comments? On the?
There are no hands up, John.
Okay, thank you. So um then um
Sorry.
Jim, I'm sorry.
Let's load update related to that. Um, uh I was charged with reaching out to the West Acton Village Merchants Association, so they've been they've been notified that this is on our, that we are considering this, like, you know, reported out on the the last meeting, so um and and some of them are, you know, preparing a feedback.
Okay, that's good. So well, if you let us know, Dave, we could put it on for the fifteenth if you're ready. When you're ready. So then item eight would be discuss the zoning bylaw, electric vehicle parking station requirements. Uh Jim, please.
Okay, so um I think the 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 piece in the packet here came rather late, so uh let me give a very brief intro and then I think we should probably, I should probably share a screen of that of that document. Um, the um so we do have a long, uh we have a goal of um supporting um uh increasing electric vehicle charging stations uh at commercial properties. Uh we had a a bylaw, we had a warrant article ready for the twenty twenty uh spring town meeting and then yanked it when we were, uh when the board was trying to figure out how to reduce the time that the uh the town meeting would take. Um, so that 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 warrant article is ready to go if we want to do it again. Um, I did a little bit of research uh without, you know, without without um, you know, bothering the planning department uh to try to see if there were additional things we might want to consider. Um, I guess I would summarize it this way. There are, there are other uh zoning bylaws related to electric vehicle charging stations in other towns and other cities in Massachusetts and in other states, and some of them raise issues that um you know, maybe maybe were addressed or not in our warrant articles. There's some technical things that I might recommend the uh the the planning department look into if they want to bring this back. Um, and I think the other thing we heard and also saw in other bylaws was um whether we wanted to increase the numbers. Um why don't I share my screen at this point and I can show you some of the numbers here? Um, let's see.
I can share for you if you wish.
Uh either way, that's, well, why don't I do it? Because then I can go ahead.
That's fine.
Control the, you know, where it comes out. Um, okay, so let's share that. Okay, so is that showing up now?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So this part is the zoning bylaw that we had ready last year, Article twenty seven. Um, that basically said, you know, if you're, if you're, if it's a new, if it's a major change to your parking area, uh then this bylaw comes into into account, where if you have twenty six to fifty spaces, you have to have one EV charging spot. Uh fifty to a hundred spaces have two spots and an additional charging station for each fifty after that. Um, the um other towns um have different requirements. Uh here is an example of um where was this one? This is from, this is from Vermont, a Vermont planning agency um who were, who were proposing that the percentages be a little bit higher than that, uh except in industrial zones where it would only be one percent, uh you know, so, you know, uh you'd need a hundred spots to require one. Um, but in particularly in multi-household residential settings, you'd want a higher setting because uh the primary, the primary way people will be charging their cars is not when they're out for, you know, a little bit of shopping, but when they're at home. Uh, you know, once they're at home, they typically want to be able to charge overnight. So you might want to have higher different, higher numbers there. The other distinction they make here that I think is we might want to consider if we decide to go ahead with this bylaw and we want to give some guidance to the planning department, is that there might be a higher percentage of um EV-ready parking spots. So that would be spots that are wired appropriate for future, uh you know, adding future state, uh future charging stations. And it's much cheaper to put in the electrical infrastructure to support um, you know, charging stations at the time of the construction of the parking lot, rather than having to, you know, dig up a bunch of concrete. So uh it's appropriate, I think, to have a a slightly higher requirement for uh how um how 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 many spots are ready for EVs potentially in the future. Um, the other thing that was relevant here was that we we had a some discussion about um internal spots, you know, par- uh garage spots. And um I I didn't get a definitive answer with my research because I'm no zoning expert, but it appeared that it was possible that those those kind of requirements would be part of the building code, which is beyond the scope of what we can do in a in our own zoning bylaw. I'm not sure that's true, but that might be worth discussing. Um, um, and let's see, so to summarize, I recommend that we ask the town manager to have a staff develop an EV charging station bylaw similar to the one we had before with these possible revisions. Um, so a waiver process or a lowered requirement for EV charging stations um where all the units are below market rate. Uh this, this, for example, would have an impact at the at the at the Main Street um, at the Main Street development where it would be appropriate to have some charging stations available, but we might not need as high a percentage or number as we would in other stations. We don't want to add uh extra requirements onto affordable housing. They might choose to have them, but we don't want to uh force them to spend more money in a case where, you know, it's difficult enough to finance uh affordable housing where all the units are are below market rate. Um, we might want to consider an increase in the requirement for EV-ready parking spots, but especially for multifamily housing um with parkings outside. Um, there was some technical points above that we, I just would love to have the staff review those. Um, and uh and also verify that EV charging inside is is the province of the building code. Uh if it's not, then let's consider adding EV-ready requirements for indoor parking as well. And also finally, it would be helpful to have um to have the staff look at, and and we as selectmen might have an opinion as well about whether this is better placed on the spring twenty twenty one town meeting or some future town meeting such as a fall special town meeting.
Okay, Jim, thank you. So what is it you would like us to do uh this evening?
Um, I'd like us to consider char- uh asking the town manager to have a staff develop an EV charging, charging station bylaw. Um, and uh if that, if the, if the board is okay with that, then there might be some additional feedback we might want to give them, uh these points uh one through four that I can review on the uh in the in the document I wrote.
So we would have to do the process over again from where we were a year ago?
Yeah, if there's changes to the, if there's changes to the bylaw, then there would need to be a rehearing with the planning, with the planning board.
Because this was an article that we took off to make uh to make sure we fit the meeting into one night and we didn't bring it back in the fall. Uh I'm sorry, thank you. Dean?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think there's some great points here, but I I'm really skeptical that this is something could get turned around in time for the spring town meeting or the early summer town meeting. Um, especially if there's got to be another hearing, I think, you know, just looking at the drive-up windows consideration, I think that hearing is going to be held like end of March or early April and I I I think it's a great idea, but I think, you know, I'd go for the future town meeting and and actually have the thing done right rather than hurried up.
Uh David?
Yeah, I I I agree with uh Dean that it um, you know, it ma- makes sense to do it right and do it once instead of doing it and then changing it again in a future town meeting. One of the things that I think is extremely important is to concentrate on residences. Um, uh I I'm not even sure if there should be um uh, you know, we we should take away the uh the requirement for affordable units. I mean, I uh uh in the in new car sales, uh electric cars, plug-in cars are approaching five percent of the market and that's only trending up. Um, and um I believe something in the neighborhood of three quarters of the charging is done at home. Um, and so uh mu- to me, much more important than having more char- I don't object at all to more chargers and shopping centers, but but much more important to that is in um uh, you you know, i- any any residential developments have a- access. And I don't think, you know, that that Vermont number, I think you showed, or it was in the document uh was was eight percent and I don't think that's a bad number. By the time, you know, this got all into place, I think uh we we could be talking about eight percent of nu- nu- new car sales uh be- being plug-in cars. So um uh and and, you know, General Motors wants to go to a hundred percent in fifteen years and so um and they sell a few cars each year. So um uh, you know, I I think the residences is extremely important. And the the building code, I think, um is also really important, but I think that's a, as you kind of indicated, that's a completely separate effort. I think that can be done with a local bylaw or building code change. But um uh I don't think it's zoning, right? It's a, it's a uh, I think we can do that in a, my understanding anyway is we can do that in a bylaw. Um, um, but I mean, I could be wrong, but that that was my understanding, but I think it's a completely separate effort. It's not part of the same warrant art- article.
Dean?
Yeah, just to amplify what David said, I think Charlie Baker has come up with a a push to uh not allow the sale of any new fossil fuel fired vehicles after I think it's twenty thirty-five. So, you know, we're, when you think of how long this infrastructure is going to be in the ground um and, you know, people on the planning stages to get this stuff done, I think, you know, it's it's important that that we make sure that this infrastructure is going to be there, so let's do it right. And I especially like the idea about, you know, even if you don't have the charging stations, get the conduit, get the wire on the ground, get everything ready so that as you need that capacity, you can just plug in new stuff rather than dig up a parking lot.
Thank you.
I agree. There there's one person in the audience with their hand up.
Please.
And we currently have twenty-one uh attendees on our meeting. Uh Deborah Sines, please go ahead.
Thanks, David. Um, I want, I just wanted to say that I I absolutely endorse the idea, the ideas that Jim put out in his document and to your point, David, it's not just GM, there's another big maker. They're, they're really talking about going wholesale EV within, what is this? This is twenty-one, within like five to seven years, so the market is going to drive this as well as whatever sticks, you know, government may be exercising. So I'm fully in favor and the focus on residence is important, the uh focus on um readiness. You know, even if the the charging infrastructure isn't going in day one, the readiness for that is great. The other thing I want to just say is that um when, you know, when whoever it is who is going to dive in to the weeds on this in terms of uh these things in commercial settings, commercial lots and that sort of thing, I think it's really worth thinking about um both the levels of the charging and i- as that relates to how long people are going to be at that commercial site. If people are going to be bopping in for ten minute, in and out for ten minutes because of the nature of the business, it's pointless to have charging there no matter what, because nobody charges for ten minutes. It's a joke. But if people are going to be engaged somewhere for an hour or more, then, you know, then that becomes a different thing. Also, you know, there are three levels of charging. There's trickle, which is one-ten. There's the level two, which is two-twenty. And then there's um the DC, which is the fast charging, and there may even be some places where the DC charging makes sense. I'm not saying that I know which is which, but I just want people to be aware of all those variables when you're thinking about what makes sense where and how the bylaw gets written. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Deborah. And Dean?
Yeah, I think, you know, it obviously it's it's something for the planning department to get involved in, but it also would be a great job for um our new Sustainability Director to get going on it. Uh seen some stuff that she's already coming up with for some grant applications she's got, so uh, you know, this is, this is right up her alley.
Okay, so uh uh Jim, then then just we will take no action on your
Well, I guess the, what the merging consensus I heard in front of the board was that um we would have, we'd have John work with his staff to bring something to the, to a, like a fall town meeting and that he would have discretion about, you know, he and his staff would have the discretion about when to get going on it. It seems like things are pretty busy right now. It will take some time to do the right research, so, you know, but but if if we, if we want to, I think we could usefully communicate our enthusiasm about hearing back from him at some point on this.
May we do that? Dean and David and Joan? Thumbs up?
Great.
Okay. So um our our next item, uh John, is approval letter of support for the dam and seawall grant.
Yes, uh thank, thank you. Uh I guess I'll stand up again. We're we're, as I mentioned, for the River Street property, uh the state has required us to remove hazardous portions of that dam. We're in the uh fifty to sixty percent design phase. Uh for doing that, the design is currently on hold, uh as we sort out um the archaeological um study that we've started over in the area. Uh and as a result of that work, we may be modifying the design uh to accommodate what we learned from that. Uh but in the meantime, we're actively pursuing grant funding to help cover the costs associated with uh dam removal, portions of the dam that we do intend to remove and have to remove. Uh the grant, I think, is um, we're seeking a million dollars and it's actually required that we fund um two hundred and fifty thousand as a mat- two-hundred-and-fifty thousand as a match and that's proposed in the, in the capital plan as a borrowing, if we're successful with the grant, seeking authorization to borrow that funding at town meeting. So this letter is just simply from the board selectman to express its support for pursuing that grant.
Okay, so the draft letter was in the packet and it's for me to sign as chair. Are there any questions or comments on the, on the draft? Joan, did you have your?
No, I was going to move to approve.
Okay, so if a move to approve the, the draft letter for me to sign as chair then, was there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So no further discussion. David, if you'd call the roll then?
Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye.
Okay. So, thank you. To the consent agenda. Consent item ten amended executive session minutes February one, twenty-twenty-one.
Hold.
Hold? Okay, that, that is the only consent item we have. What is your question, Dean?
I, I'd like to go over it one more time and just take a look at the amendments. And I'm sure I'd be ready to bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll put it on for March fifteenth then.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is the end of our agenda. We will meet again in, in regular session two weeks from now on March fifteen, when we'll have the resumed sixty, sixty-seven Powder Mill Road Hearing. So with, that's it. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
And David, if you'd called the roll for the last time this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Snyder Grant?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Charter?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye. So we're adjourned.
Okay, have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
You'll see you all Thursday.
Yep. See you around.
That's noon time, right?
Yes.
Noon time.